We've got Liz Steed, our Community Development Director. Hello, Liz. We've got Shelley Park, our Planning Commission Chair. Hello, Shelley. We've got Josh Halpin, our Planning Commission Vice Chair. All right. Hello, Josh. And Lisa, is the way you pronounce your last name Gruder? Greeter. Greeter. Okay. Hello. I'm seeing you on Zoom, actually, I think, last time we saw each other a while ago. Live? Okay, great. Well, welcome back. Take it away, all of y'all.
I'm sorry, would you please turn your mic on? Thank you.
Ah, there we go. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission have very graciously agreed to give up even a little bit more of their time. And they have given up a lot of their time in this effort, so they would like to say a few words to council and tell you a little bit about their experience to get here where we are. So Chair Park?
Thank you. Good evening, council members, city manager and staff. We are pleased to present the Planning Commission's recommended comprehensive plan. The current Planning Commission was brought together under unusual circumstances, tasked with learning our role as a commission and coming up to speed quickly in order to meet the deadline. We're grateful that you chose us to do this work. I'm proud of our ability to absorb and process the information and collaborate as a team, not letting differences get in the way of progress. Although there were some very long meetings, we were still able to joke and laugh together at the end. We're comforted by the fact that this plan can be revisited every five years for the mandated GMA progress report to keep up with current trends, changing conditions, and updated state legislation. That said, we are proud of the work that we've done to help envision a future Burian, a future Burian that can grow in a thoughtful way and meet the Growth Management Act's housing and job number targets while attempting to maintain the human-scale, small-town feel of the city that we love. We understand that change can be difficult, but good planning that anticipates change can help mitigate unintended growing pains. We are grateful to, in particular, Commission liaison Michelle Barrera and Director of Community Development Liz Stead, who quickly got up to speed as she joined staff mid-progress, mid-process, and the consultants from Burke Consulting and Makers, Lisa, Rachel, and Ian, who attended meetings. They invested many hours of analysis and documentation, providing us with excellent material and a spirit of collaboration. I personally have enjoyed the dialogue as we consider different versions of the plan and what would best suit our community. It was enlightening when we took a tour of the city together so that we could see our impact at the street level rather than from the impersonal map view. As the region continues to grow, we will continue to look at new ways of accommodating the growth while encouraging the elements that allow us to continue to flourish as a healthy, equitable community. We're available to answer your questions about our recommendation, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. And to you, sorry, Josh.
Very well said, Shelley. I'd just first like to thank the council, staff, and the consultants for the opportunity to serve and to be a part of this process. It's extremely rewarding. And, you know, I want to just talk about what it was like to be dropped into this process about three-quarters done. It was a bit bewildering, but the commission gradually found its groove and was able to move forward. Like Shelley said, it was not always fun or easy. A lot of the time, I would have to describe it as gut-wrenching. But I think we settled on something that we can be proud of that delivers density equity and should attract developers. I would characterize this process as a series of aha moments, and I thought I'd share a few. The first one is House Bill 1110. The middle housing bill did a lot of the work of densification for us. In Burian, this bill allows for up to two dwelling units on any lot, up to four if the lot is within a quarter-mile of a major transit stop, and up to four units if one of the dwellings is affordable housing. In short, this new law does not mandate middle housing ever, but it does offer developers the option of building more housing units in less space. Two, changes in zoning changes the way a land can be used, but there are a lot of other things that are not affected by changes in zoning. For example, zoning does not change interest rates. It does not change the cost of labor or materials. It does not change a plot's geography or geology. Zoning does not change an individual property owner's interest rate or their financial position. Does not change current or past land use, such as the location of major thoroughfares and community amenities. Changes in zoning do not change consumer preferences as they relate to housing. I could go on, but I think you understand the point I'm trying to make. Zoning matters, but there are a lot, a host of considerations present with any land use decision. At a time of massive redevelopment in the region, Burian has not been a hotbed compared to Seattle or the East Side over the past 10 years. And I expect things to stay that way or slow down for the foreseeable future. In short, this plan is aggressive and is intended to attract redevelopment, but Burian is not going to become Manhattan or even Seattle anytime soon or ever because of the plan's commission's current proposal. With that said, this has been a rewarding journey, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve the city in this capacity, and I encourage you to adopt the plan.
Thank you both very much. We appreciate those comments.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to recognize you, Mayor and Council, the environment in which our Planning Commission, the Chair, Vice Chair Liz, and Lisa, our consultant from Burke, have been put in over the last several months. Back, sorry about that. It is, it's been a sprint for members of the commission, for staff, and to go from where we were several months ago and working to fill the Planning Commission to a point where we have leadership in the Planning Commission that has gotten to work with excellent members of our team to get the product to council to start the process of our every year, five-year requirement, is monumental in itself. So I just wanted to recognize you, Mayor, and to you, Council, the great work of our Planning Commission, the great work of staff, the great work of our consultants, to not only start where they started, but to get us here. It's been a full sprint, and they've been up to the task. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will go ahead and start with the next slide. We're going to go ahead and take you through the comprehensive plan and the recommendation. We're going to be at a fairly high-scale level today, and then in the next sessions, we'll be drilling down more to get into more detail about all of the different elements. Next slide. So just to remind everyone of where we started, there was, in the fall of 2022, first started with the visioning for the plan. Twenty-one events, thirteen hundred comments. So a lot of interest from the community. People care a lot about their community and want to be involved, which was fantastic. There was also an advisory committee that held six meetings as well from January 23rd, 2023, to January 2024. Then we started to talk about different stories and strategies in the spring of 2023. And that was taking all that input that the community and the advisory committee had given us and trying to make a cohesive story about it. What does, how does Burian want to grow in this coming next 20 years? And also, and also in front of the clicker right there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I just got the power of the clicker. Sorry, I was getting attacked. It's right there. That's right. Now I feel powerful, right? So we also had, in the fall of this year and spring, fall of last year and spring of this year, that's when we started to share all of that good work and create an actual draft plan. So we did have an open house with seventy-five people, a story map, and we also had our draft environmental impact statement go out, and we had a sixty-day comment period, and we have twenty-five letters in response to that as well. And all of that was incorporated then into the draft that the Planning Commission has looked at. So the Planning Commission did, they did a lot of intensive work between March and July. They essentially had nine meetings where they talked about all of these different elements of the comprehensive plan and also some of the other ancillary moment, ancillary plans that we'll be talking about. We held a public hearing in June, and they actually came in on July 3rd to do their recommendations. So we held them to a very, very strict schedule, and they put up with us. So I really appreciated that. It was, it was tough. It was a lot. So moving forward, we're going to start moving into the city council schedule. You're also going to be held to a fairly strict schedule. We have three meetings set aside for introduction of the difference comprehensive plan elements. And then we have another three meetings where we'll be talking about the zoning code amendments that are related to the comprehensive plan and the Ambon Boulevard Park work that has been done. So we've split it up to try and give you a little bit of time on each of those. And then in the beginning of October, we're looking at deliberation and adoption. We will also hold one more public hearing, and I believe we'll be holding that in September. And at that point, the public can come in and give you their opinions as well. So the proposals that you're seeing that come along with this planning commission recommendation, there's the 2044 comprehensive plan periodic update. There's also the Ambon and Boulevard Park Community Plan, the mixed-use and multifamily zoning proposals, draft multifamily tax exemption code, planned action ordinances for Ambon Boulevard Park in greater downtown, and the transportation master plan. So a lot of elements here are all packaged together, which is why you've got six meetings to consider this. There's a lot of information. The planning commission did have recommendations when it came out, which was to approve the hearing draft. And then they gave us some direction on the 6/27 meeting and the July 3rd meeting. So they recommended that the comprehensive plan with some amendments to update capacity of the future land use map be approved, that the transportation master plan also be adopted, the Ambon Boulevard Park Community Plan, zoning map and code, the multifamily tax exemption, and CIPA planned action ordinances all be approved. They did ask us to update the urban center plan to match the planning commission direction. It's a minor update, and to add some conservative bicycle parking standards to the urban center and mixed-use multifamily zoning. The zoning code currently does not require any bicycle parking in those areas. Also, they add a policy to the housing element to encourage mixed-income developments through incentive programs. They also requested that the multifamily tax exemption be expanded to cover the whole city and also had a change to where the code references appropriate housing actually refer to the housing element in comprehensive plan, just for more clarity. Then they also wanted us to link the ADA, American Disability Act, needs to the transportation vision and equity. So relating to some of what we've heard from public comment today, really enhancing that connection. And then, you know, there are some grammar and typo corrections that we were also requested to pick up, so we're working on that. I'm going to go ahead and pass this off to Lisa now, and she's going to walk you through these different elements.
Thank you. So Liz went over the, the one key component was the comprehensive plan periodic update. It is addressing the community's housing target for the 2019 to 2044 period, seventy-five hundred new dwelling units and thirteen hundred ninety-three emergency beds. Within those seventy-five hundred are different income bands, and so the plan needs to demonstrate that it can provide housing at different income levels. There's also a jobs target, forty-seven seventy new jobs. And those targets were set based on Growth Management Act requirements, Vision 2050 Regional Plan, Growth Strategy, and then the countywide planning policies are where most of the details are, where the, every city in the county is given those targets. The comprehensive plan builds off the current comprehensive plan that the city has. It has twelve sections in addition to a vision chapter. The elements are listed there on the right. There's quite a number of them. The ones that received the most attention and the update were housing. And then there is a climate change and resiliency element that is intending to address much of what the city will need to do under HB 1181. The city will have more things to do as well and has till 2029 to fully complete that. Human services is another new element. One of the changes, as Liz mentioned earlier, from the Planning Commission was to make some adjustments to the housing element. So that that is getting incorporated. A key component that helps the city determine that it can meet those growth targets for both housing and jobs is a future land use plan. And the Planning Commission spent the most time, I think, on this core plan and zoning, really thinking through what did the draft EIS environmental impact statement say, the two growth alternatives, their local knowledge, as was mentioned, there was a tour. Also, a number of pieces of information around the market conditions, socioeconomics, environmental health, and so on. There's a map tool that we have a link to in your packet that goes through a number of pieces of information the commission considered. And then, of course, public comment. Some areas of focus were First Avenue South, Sunnydale, and the urban center, especially through the final hearing input. In terms of land capacity, the plan does more than meet the seventy-five hundred units. But in order to meet all the income bands, we had to make some adjustments and address some densities to make sure we could hit each income band. And also, the city, just like other cities, has to show it can do more than just the initial twenty-year period, has to show that it's thinking even beyond the twenty-year period based on Growth Management Act case law. So this proposal that's before you does meet the housing targets, the job targets, the affordability bands, and also your downtown area needs to hit a certain number of people and jobs. So it does all of those things after a lot of fine-tuning by the commission. And then the second major component was to bring to, forward the Ambon Boulevard Park Community Plan, which is a subarea plan that addresses two main areas of the community. This slide is just showing there was a pretty extensive two-year class process to develop a vision and different options. It had its own environmental impact statement that did get folded into the community-wide one, and then there was a proposed final plan. And that was before the Planning Commission, along with some zoning associated with that area. The major themes or the major components were to strengthen ties to the place of both Ambon and Boulevard Park, to have safer and healthier communities and to grow with intention, and there was quite a bit of focus on equity priorities. And on the left is the Ambon corridor and on the right, the Boulevard Park area, the two plans that were in the proposed final. As a result of the commission taking a cumulative look at these areas along with the rest of the city, there are some adjustments that we'll speak to on the next slides. The updated plan is informed by some of these adjustments. So what you're seeing on the left was the original Ambon corridor, and on the right, those black circles are identifying areas where the density was adjusted a bit, and some of that density was moved over to other corridors like First Avenue. But it was also reflecting public comments in areas that the community asked the commission to take a closer look at. And then part of the requirements under HB 1220, which set up the new housing element requirements, were to not only do your plan by the end of the year, but also to make whatever adjustments are needed in your zoning so that you can meet those affordability bands. And so some of the most fruitful areas are to take a look at the zoning. This table is quite a table. On one slide, it's on page forty-three of your packet. But the main idea is that we are going from many designations into fewer categories in the future land use map. The zoning will be detailed, but the future land use map is setting the overall categories and visions. So the downtown urban center in the red there, commercial mixed use in the hot pink, and other different levels of housing and jobs. The idea is to set the overall framework, and then the zoning details will implement that. So this is the same land use plan map that we were looking at earlier, but we wanted to contrast the zoning that's coming on the next slide with this. This is setting forth the overall vision for all residential densities, all job types, parks and schools. And it, based on the Planning Commission's work, it blends those alternatives. It increases housing in Boulevard Park and along the First Avenue corridor and focuses in on that really dark, deep color there in the greater downtown. When we're looking at the implementing zoning, the changes that are proposed right now are the mixed-use and multifamily zoning. That's why quite a bit of the area is not shown in any color there. That's where a lot of the middle housing that the Vice Chair was speaking to would apply. And the city has a little bit more time to address the middle housing through the middle of next year. So not a lot of time, but a little more time than this part. The commission spent time thinking through the character of each area and put the greatest heights along First Avenue near downtown and then mid-rise in some of the mixed-use and multifamily corridors and low-rise in much of the rest of the community. The city took, or the commission took a close look at the downtown urban center, which is close up there on the right-hand side with the red dashed boundary, and varied the heights and intensities based on location. So the areas that are called MUA or mixed-use arterial are where the greater heights are proposed, and downtown is more in the mid-rise arena. Spent time looking at the different parts of the urban center and looked at the creative district and different characters of the areas, and also made an adjustment to the urban center boundary on the, on the north. I don't think I can. Well, it's right where the MU2E is, and then there's like a kind of a dip, a U there, that the commission spent time to consider. And the, along with the mixed-use multifamily zoning map, came charts of land uses. This is a chart of dimensions and densities. And, and the commission also looked at height and density bonuses as well as parking. And that's where the commission was suggesting adding bicycle parking to the standards. And then, as Liz mentioned earlier, some of the changes that the Planning Commission fine-tuned in the urban center will mean mending a plan that the city adopted in 2021 to make it all compatible. So there are some amazingly still additional efforts to do by year's end. So I don't know, Liz, if you want to cover what some of those are.
Sure, I can go ahead and start. We do have some efforts to clean up, to be consistent with this comp plan and also with House Bill 1220. So we are looking at taking to the, for Planning Commission, again, a package of housing that we will actually start likely in September, and we'll be looking at emergency housing, emergency shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. So we can look at it more holistically versus one piece at a time. So I think we'll probably be more successful as we look at how all of those different pieces are going to get us to meet the need that has been identified in the city. We'll also be addressing design standards. We'll be starting that in August, and that will be similar to what has been drafted for the Ambon Boulevard Park, and that will be with the Planning Commission, with the idea that we dovetail the design standards and some of the urban planning work all together so that it does come into the final package that the city council will pass for adoption. The transition permit supportive and so on, those probably will come to you after. But they will be, you know, in short order. We're trying to do that by the end of the year so we can get those in place and implemented.
So just a couple of slides on the related codes. So the multifamily tax exemption code you've had applied in the downtown vicinity for some time. There were proposals with the Ambon Boulevard Park Community Plan to extend to those areas. And then, as Liz described earlier, the Planning Commission wanted to make that incentive available to anywhere there was mixed use or multifamily zoning. And so that was a proposal brought forward for the public hearing, and that's what's coming before you is to extend that incentive throughout the community. So the city council will have to develop a resolution that sets the hearing date for the multifamily tax exemption and to identify the areas it would apply, which is generally the zoning map that, that focuses on those mixed-use multifamily areas. So we'll bring that forward for a September date. And then the planned actions are to facilitate the environmental review, both the Ambon Boulevard Park EIS and the one for the citywide comprehensive plan with, with a focus in the greater downtown. Are, were done at a level of information and detail that mitigation measures could be applied. And so those ordinances will be before you to facilitate that environmental review process.
Sorry. Abraham, you're on the English. Thank you.
And we are now at our final component, which is also a major component, the Transportation Master Plan Process, TMP. And what it's describing across the top are the major components of the engagement process and information development that kind of followed the, the process that Liz described earlier with visioning and information gathering and then strategies and coming forward last fall with a draft plan, and then that was brought to the Planning Commission, and adjustments were proposed for the hearing draft. The, the plan is organized around some major goals, so connectivity, travel options, equity, economic development, and strategic funding. And just like with the transportation element, the transportation master plan is based off that same vision. So having a little more attention paid to the Americans with Disability Act in the vision of the plan and the element is part of the commission recommendations. The plan has a lot of information in it, but we're trying to give you some major highlights. One is that in developing the projects that respond to the analysis and the public input, there's a proposed framework for weighting the different projects. So higher weights are given to multimodal trans, travel options, then to connect destinations and land uses, prioritizing investments for those that have the least access, and then fostering vibrancy as a place to live, work, and play, and then a strategy of optimizing limited resources. Based on the criteria, a number of improvements are proposed. They include complete streets, which means travel by foot, bike, or auto. And so speaking to some of the comments that you heard in your public comment period, there are some proposals for complete street improvements on Des Moines Memorial Drive in the Boulevard Park area, for example. There are other bicycle and pedestrian projects and corridor improvements, as well as some selected vehicle capacity projects. And the, based on the amount of funding available, the, the plan is balanced over a twenty-year period to account for likely revenues. So those are the, the highlights. I don't know, Liz, if you want to describe next steps.
So next steps, we will be back here in, I guess, at your next meeting, and we'll be diving into one of the elements of the comprehensive plan. We'll probably do a couple of elements. We'll have some time for conversation, discussion, any direction you want to provide staff. And as we go through this, we will then have the public hearing with any recommendation, recommended changes that the council is directing after hearing what the Planning Commission brought forward. So if you have some changes, we'll take those to the public hearing, and then we'll be able to, you know, get through to the adoption. And then we'll be able to, you know, get through to the adoption. But uh, I think it will be a, you know, we'll have some meaty topics, but we'll try and go more in-depth and get everybody the information I need. So uh, we look forward to it. So we're available for any questions you have this evening.
Thank you very much. Um. First, I just want to say thanks to you both, uh, as chair and vice chair of the planning commission. You are communicative with me, I know for sure. I'm sure with other members of council, we talked regularly about what was going on and what we had before you and what you should consider and what would be best and how it would be best. And we thought through a lot of those things, different phone calls, different get-togethers. So well done. Congratulations on what I think is a really successful comprehensive plan. And so also to both of you as well, this is an incredible, this is an incredible future plan for the city of Burien. I think you hit on a couple of points about, this is, this is about density. This is about wealth creation. This is about partnering with developers and property owners to see what is possible. It is about investment in the city, long-term, what we're able to do, what we're able to accomplish. And I think this, this gets to where we're at as a region and a country. We're, we're in a limited supply situation. This is all a supply-side uh, increased need. I once went to and listened to uh, the lieutenant governor talk about the need for the four Ls, land, labor, lumber and loans to get the supply-side uh, needs of housing increased. And I think that uh, the foundation of that is a city comprehensive plan and zoning guide that incentivizes housing construction and investment and wealth creation and partnering with developers to make it so that we can expand density and transit-oriented development and green space. And make those private-public partnerships go out to 2044 and meet the needs of our community. Um, maintaining our uniqueness. I think the stories that you have of working with some of the most local neighborhoods of Burien that expressed concerns is fantastic. I think that speaks to the compassion of the city of Burien to respond to a lot of uh, neighborhood, community uh, uh, concerns that are, that arise and say, listen, we're going to listen to you. We're going to work with you. We're going to make this better. And so that was fantastic to hear from the folks that came and said, uh, that that was your experience too. So thank you for um, coming tonight to let us know about that. Um, because I remember when you came a year ago and said, we have concerns about this. Um, I'm really excited about this comprehensive plan. You meet all of my, you meet everything I wanted to do and wanted to see around density, around transit-oriented development, around investment. And I think that uh, I'm excited to continue going down the next few months and to see a lot of you all. You're going to be back quite a bit um, to work with us and, and fashion this to move forward into, into meeting all the needs that Burien has over the next, over the next 20 years. So uh, so well done. Congratulations. And I'm super impressed by, by this. This is exactly, this is exactly what we need. Any other council comments or questions? Council member Moore?
Yeah, um, I uh, wanted to sort of echo some of that. I've watched planning commission meetings as homework for my council role and I've enjoyed watching this commission come together. Um, what's impressed me is that every individual in it is pulling their weight in some capacity, whether um, in or out of agreement, they're all bringing their thoughts and their opinions to voice, which is impressive. And I also just really enjoyed the presentation today. I've been trying continually to wrap my head around the comprehensive plan and the level of detail that you're working with, combined with um, the, like you're going street by street in detail level, but also thinking about the next 20 years. It's, it's a really interesting and challenging mashup of timeframes and, and space. I did have a couple of questions. Um, it, it seems that the comp plan doesn't say this will happen. It says this, this can or may happen, it's permitted to happen. What if goals drift apart? So I was looking particularly at the jobs goals versus the housing goals. Uh, what if, what if we are getting really close on one of those, but not the other? Um, what does that do to a city? And are there tweaks that a planning commission can do to help keep us moving in both directions at the same rate?
I can start on this and Lisa may have some ads. But essentially, we do have the opportunity to update the comprehensive plan, you know, periodically as we move forward. So this is a 20-year look ahead and it's the most major look ahead. This is the biggest one, but certainly if they found that we were getting really out of whack and we were only getting jobs and we knew we desperately needed housing still, we could look at the comprehensive plan. We also have the ability to update our zoning codes and some of the other elements that we have or take in our economic development plan. You know, there are a lot of different tools we can use to, little triggers we can pull. But essentially, the comprehensive plan as written is the backbone that supports that development. And then these other elements will come in and, you know, try and incentivize uh, example, housing over jobs. But if we got really out of whack, we do have some tools that we can, you know, deploy and also revisions we can make.
I would add to that, there's two forms of monitoring that the city will need to do. One is, as the chair mentioned, there's a five-year progress report that's due to commerce. And um, the topics are housing, um, greenhouse gas reduction and vehicle miles traveled reduction. And the other is that the King, King County and cities um, are asked to monitor annually how they're doing on their own proposals for housing. So policies and code and any other programs that a city would choose to do. Um, the city will report annually on how well that's going.
Can I ask a second question set? Um, and, and that, the second question I had is what um, comes with the, the denser growth in some of the areas? Um, do sidewalks or utilities or, or so forth follow with that growth or accompany that growth? Um, and I'm thinking particularly because I'm most familiar with it at the Boulevard Park area, where um, the density is being moved out into places that currently lack um, a lot of those features. And I'm, I'm curious how, how they're paid for. Are they, is it by the developer? You know, how does that part work?
There is an expectation that growth pays for growth. And so you would normally anticipate to see, and we would have this in our zoning ordinances and working with public works as well, that if someone's bringing in a new development, they would be responsible for putting in those street improvements that are, you know, envisioned in the plan. And then there's also a, something that happens sometimes where you get kind of the, the lost tooth, where you've got, you know, half a mile sidewalk and then you have nothing. A lot of times the city will try and fill in some of those areas within our right-of-way. And that's part of what the T M P looks at and anticipates. Are there areas where the city itself may need to take more of that on? But there is a, there certainly is a period of time where you have some areas more developed than others as the redevelopment happens. But it will mainly be by the developers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reiki.
I'm trying to figure out exactly where to begin, but I'm going to start with thank you. Cause I know that um, it was difficult jumping in um, to the planning commission at the um, place where you did in the comprehensive plan development. And I also recognize that there was a lot of work to, for the planning commission to get to a place where they could understand what was going on and, you know, communicate with each other. And um, I think, you know, even having Liz come on in the middle of the process or near the end of the process, um, I should say. Um, kudos to all of you for that amazing work. And I look forward to digesting all of this. I, I've been carefully reading it. It's pretty dense and I'm making my way through it. And some of the questions that um, council member Moore asked were some of the questions that I initially had about, okay, what happens if we don't meet these goals? You know, where, where are we at and how are we going to do that? And the other piece of that being um, having the financial resources to be able to implement a lot of the pieces of the plans, as you probably know, we don't have a huge budget here in Burien. And we um, we're working hard to try and correct that. But, you know, I understand like, it's kind of like, which is coming first, the chicken or the egg? In terms of getting the funding to do the pieces to um, encourage more funding for the city that will come in. But I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to um, address a lot of the needs that our community is asking for and the kinds of ways that we want the city um, to be able to grow. And I'm looking forward to hearing more and more about how you guys got to certain places. Um, I probably have more research that I'm going to do on the M F T easily. What does that mean to expand it to the entire city? Um, and what is that saying to us? Um, the, the weighting percentages, I was curious about how we got to those percentages. Um, nothing you have to answer now, but just things that as you're as you're getting ready to present to us, there's pieces and, and I haven't read the whole thing yet. I'm trying to, trying to digest it all. Um, so I um, also the timing um, of uh, October 7th being hopefully the deadline that we meet, if we did expand beyond that, I, this is, this has to be done by December or you need it done by October 7th for additional reasons?
We do have more time for the state. However, we were trying to clear the council's decks so that they could move into the budget conversation. So um, you know, another very meaty subject, so trying to move this one through and through.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so thank you very much for all of the hard work that has been done and I look forward to hearing more. Hopefully, the planning commission will be back to speak to us more as we go through this, but thank you very much. And I'll continue to try and educate myself as much as possible and I'll bring any other questions that I have as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Reiki. Councilmember Garcia?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you to the commissioners and consultant staff, especially, you know, somebody had to write it, put it all together. So thank you to the staff members who, uh, who all put this all together. It's a lot. Couple of things that I took some notes on. Um, I think we started this as a 50-year goal. And it was started in 2019 to 2044, or are we starting now? Cause I, I thought we maybe already started it. One of the questions is, I guess, for us to, uh, when you said this new plan hits our targets, you seemed very confident, which makes me happy. Right? But one thing I think would be helpful is for us to know, where are we in the last five years? Like what number of units have we done in the last five years? So that I can see, okay, that's what we did so far through COVID. Through, you know, the, by probably the hardest three years to start looking at building. Uh, but us connecting that to that goal so that we know that this is why we feel so confident about it and seeing where that production has been. The other note was, I think it'd be good if you haven't already to make sure you contact and share this plan with our school district. Uh, sit down with the facilities members, their leadership board and find out like this, you know, this is the plan that we started to, to share to the council. They're going to be taking it into effect. How does that correlate to your growth plan and to your, your, you know, we have some schools that are empty. We have like, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to know that. And also to share that with um, our neighbors. The White Center, unincorporated area, they've recently done some updates to their sub-area for the first time in 20 years. Um, C-Tech, um, you know, they're on the other side of Des Moines Memorial Way. So as we're looking at walkability and things, you know, a lot of that is, we want to make sure that our neighbors see where we're planning to see our growth, where we're planning to see the density growth. Just so that it doesn't catch them off surprise. Or the neighbors to the north in White Center, same thing with the Normandy Park. And anybody that's adjacent to the places that we're looking to increase density, I think it'll be important to make sure that um, it makes it easier for developers to see, okay, you know, I see other opportunities. If I see this and this close to North Burien and White Center, I think it'll make it easier for them to look at potentially more projects. Cause us telling the developers, you're going to be paying for our growth, makes it really challenging for, for a lot of this to move at the speed of which we need. Um, but that's usually how it happens. And then there's gaps. I know that I, I walked by Hazel Valley Elementary and there's one side of the street that has sidewalks. It's the side that the school's on, but across the street, they don't have sidewalks. And I was walking down there and I saw a little um, metal sign on the sidewalk embedded. And it basically said, the city of Burien. Uh, uh, Public Works Department and other folks applied for federal grants to help push along and make that sidewalk longer. So they really envisioned, they put, I visualize what you said in essence, you know? Developers will grow it on the properties that we're looking to increase density. And adjacent to that, we'll find ways to hopefully make that growth. And lastly, also include the conversation with our hospital, share this with them. Um, they're our largest um, employer um, outside of the school district. And I think making sure that they're aware of this, these plans, they've gone through some recent, I think, um, changes within their own leadership or I think he's got about, about somebody, but I think it would be important for them to see where we're doing our growth, what we have in mind. Um, especially since they'll share out to all the many uh, clinics that we have. We have a number of clinics, um, and dentists, therapists. I think that's probably one of our biggest sectors. It'd be good for that community to be aware of where we're on the growth, where we're looking to increase density. So that's all I had to share. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Councilmember Andrade?
Thank you, commissioners, um, for the very difficult work that you guys had encountered. I can only imagine um, coming into a spot, but that, that you guys were in and coming out of it in a very positive manner. I appreciate that. So thank you. Um, I know Commissioner Helpin, you mentioned, change is going to be difficult. And it is, it never is easy, but I appreciate the way that you've laid it all out for everyone, that, the way that everyone has laid it out uh, so that it's understandable and how it's going to work for our benefit. And it's going to work for us in our future. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Monik?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for the work you've done. I think a couple of things that come to mind, you know, when I moved into this community, I don't know, 20 some years ago, 25 years ago. When we were having challenges with building schools, uh, this facility wasn't around here. We had a little blinky building down here for city council and um, and we've developed over time. I mean, I think we've, we've gotten better. But the development really hasn't been for individuals that are working-class people, right? Like if we look at the downtown, I mean, obviously I love the downtown, great apartment complexes here. Um, and I am concerned about the um, Ambon and uh, Boulevard Park because regardless, it's gentrification. I mean, gentrification, you can't stop it. You know, we're a growing urban city. So for me, it's important that we look at the character of Burien because we're about to change as a city. What does the future of the, of Burien look like today? If you ask people, what is Burien? In fact, I was driving from Tacoma, no offense to Tacoma, and driving through all the cities coming up here, cause I'm going, man, I want to have, I want to have a good dinner. Where could I go to a good restaurant? Well, I sure don't want to go to Seattle and pay, I don't know, 40 bucks for parking or, and, and then have to hassle with the situation that you have down there. Um, so for me, it's like looking at, okay, what is the city we want to build, right? Um, I think that if we look at the aging population, I mean, I think people talk about unhoused people. And it's a very loose term because they don't talk about, hey, well, who's unhoused? And as you look at, there was an article just came out that talked about how our, our baby boomers are the fastest displaced community and becoming homeless faster than any other community. But if you look at the numbers that we have, about 84 million baby boomers been retired in the last 10 years. And we have 48 million Xers. So there is going to be a little bit of a little situation there where we're going to need housing. But here's the number that, of the millennials and the Z generation, 87 million. So here's where I see the millennials is that uh, they've never been through a recession. Things have been great in our economy for so many years. I hope that we're not heading into a recession. But I could tell you that uh, regardless, as you see the trends, uh, these millennials will start having families. And so what kind of parks are we going to have for those fa- families? What does it look like? What kind of learning experiences are going to, are they going to have with AI, uh, with just technology around the world? Um, are these parks going to be interacting? Are we going to have smart buildings? Are we going to have so? Are we going to have smart buildings? Are we going to have, so I gotta tell you, I was at the D E S E and I got to see the beautiful, you know, mountain and oversee the, I mean, I don't think there's any other city that you could see out your window and just look at that view, whether you're looking the four sides, north, south, east and west. And so I think we do have some land that's worth some, some dollars here. But I do believe that it's important for the commissioners to really have that in, in, in mind, right? And us council members and I think you community members, because we're about to change as a city. I mean, we've talked, talked about this, that we have, we're a small city with big urban issues with no money, zero money. So we do have to figure out how do we make sure that we're gathering money that's coming into the city and that we're building not only housing, that's market rate housing, but housing that has to deal with people that suffer from just illness in general. And then on top of that, what does the future look like with our school systems? I mean, there's some areas, in fact, I think some of our areas that the amount of children that are going to school are dropping. And I just got in closing, you know, I remember that I was so excited when I was living in these places about how they were going to, you know, build new schools and how the community was going to be great. And, you know, they put pictures of, you know, these poor kids, you know, and I, I, you know, I was wanting to be in those pictures because I reflected that community. But what I didn't realize that that community really wasn't being built for me. It was being built for mainstream America and it was being built for the tech economy. It was being built, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong, you know, because that's what's really energized our economy here in the Northwest. So we got to ask ourselves, what economy are we going to be a healthcare industry? Are we going to be a tech industry where we're bringing techies? Well, if we bring in techies, there's side effects of that, right? Because obviously they're making pretty good money and so it's going to displace people. But for all the developments Seattle has done, we've just continued to move further and further south. Olympia, Puyallup, Auburn, Kent. And so the character of our community has really started changing. So for me, it's looking at the buildings, right? That we, we need housing, but we also need a place where business can thrive. And we've been a small business community for a long, long time. I don't want to be a Ballard. I don't want to be a Fremont. I don't want to be a Queen Anne. And I hope that as we start moving down the road, that, that we don't start copying that. Because I think that that would be too easy for us to be able to just sign documents, say, this is the vision of Burien. I like the character of Burien, you know, this has a rich history of our Italian, our Italians, our Irish, our Hispanic, our just a developing community. And so I would hope that as we move forward, that, that's, you know, I know I've seen it in writing, but you know what they say? You know, they can make, you know, when I have people give me the resumes, well, that's creative writing. Let me know by when you come and you talk to me, you know, how do you really see the world? So for me, I don't really have any questions. I have concerns. You know, I, I decided to move in this community when people would say, well, hey, we live in Burien, there's helicopters every week in there. I think as a community, we've progressed. Do we have challenges? Yeah, like any other urban, big city or a small city is becoming an urban city. There's no question that we've been growing. But for me, it's who are we growing for and what does that look like? And that's the only couple of comments that I have on this particular subject. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to see a lot more of you moving forward. Thank you very much for this initial introduction. I think it would be great and I know that we are setting up individual council meetings with you and with the planning commission. Please, council, please continue to reach out to members of the planning commission and with Liz to continue these conversations as we move forward and, and talk about this really monumental piece of legislation that we're working on. This combined with the budget, as I've often said, are the two most important things we do as a, as a governing body. So just encourage more interaction and conversations as we move forward here. So thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. The planning calendar? If anyone has anything for the planning calendar, again, hopefully you met with the city manager, met with a staff member. Councilmember Monnet?
Before the, the planning commissioners, I didn't hear anything about the downtown over here where we said that we would see it in the planning commission in the future on our future vision of Burien, which would be the land that we have sitting out there that's still vacant property and then also with King County. So I just wanted to make sure that that was still going to be a subject of conversation. Cause I, I had a, that conversation was that we, I wanted to put it on the planning committee, planning meetings in the future, but that we would be addressing this when, when the comp plan came to us. So is that something that's still going to be conversation to be had of what does the future of that empty lot look like?
Yes, it could, it's certainly a part of the whole process. So the zoning for the immediate area would allow for different types of development through the comp plan. In terms of project specific, that specifically can be addressed through B E D P. Certainly through council, council can decide, yes, we want housing there. Yes, we want something else there. But in terms of the, the, the comp plan itself, the zoning that is designated for that particular area will guide the type of project that is allowed. And in this instance, the selling of the lot for housing or anything else would fall within the zoning that's allowed in that area.
So I think at the last meeting, you said that you didn't really need approval from the council to be able to have the B E D P really start having that conversation.
That's right.
Is that something that we're still looking at moving forward with? Cause here's what I, I believe is that, you know, we got a lot there that's continuing to, you know, collect dust. And we've had conversations and I think if we're already looking at this comp plan for the future, that the developers know that we're serious about it and this is what we look forward to doing with that property. So I'll leave that in your hands with the B E D P. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, the meeting is adjourned at, Councilmember Garcia? Are you sure? Okay. Adjourned at 7:30.
Just wanted to have a 7:30.
Yeah, he was like, ready to have a.